...thirtieth of 2014, and Mr. Dan Brake for an unexpired term which expires April 30th, 2014. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passed. Appointments made. Congratulations, everyone. Next appointment, the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints David Cannon, David C. Cannon, for the Civil Service Commission for a term which expires April 30th, 2018. May I have a second, please?
Second.
I'm sorry, I was looking at Councilman Fleming. Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Appointment made. Congratulations, Mr. Cannon. Resolved that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints Mr. Robert Schwartz to serve on the Economic Development Corporation Board for a term ending April 30th, 2018. May I have a second?
I support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Henderson. Discussion, please? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Appointment approved. Congratulations, Mr. Schwartz. We now move to the city council appointments. We have a tally of city council nominee choices for the personnel board. Would you like to direct the process, Mrs. Bittner?
So I'll read each candidate, actually, I'll read each council member's name. You just report the three candidates that you'd like to choose, and the winners at the end will receive the three nominations. Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Edna Abraham, Pete Terry Knight, and Lorraine New.
Councilmember Slater?
Edna Abraham, Pete Terry Knight, Lorraine New.
Councilmember Teetz?
Edna Abraham, Dan Brake, Terry Knight.
Mayor Daniels?
Dan Brake, Pete Terry Knight, and Lorraine New.
Councilmember Campbell?
Edna, excuse me, Edna Abraham, Pete Terry Knight, Lorraine New.
Councilmember Fleming?
Dan Brake, Pete Terry Knight, and Edna Abraham.
Dan Brake, Pete Terry Knight, and Lorraine New.
So the winners are Ms. Abraham, Mr. Knight, and Ms. New.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis, would you like to move the resolution forward?
Sure. Be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the Personnel Board for terms expiring April 30th, 2015. Edna Abraham, Pete Terry Knight, and Lorraine New.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Appointments made. Congratulations, everyone. We now move to mayoral nominations. Be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the Downtown Development Authority Board. I would like to nominate Gary Carnego and Ed Kempin to serve a term ending, oh, let's see, September 30th of 2012. There's only one, one-
There's just one.
There's only one, but I thought that one other person, there's a vacancy. Okay, that's the one that we're, that we are voting on?
York's vacancy.
Okay. I'll nominate Gary Carnego, please. Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Nomination passes. This nomination will be voted on at the next regularly scheduled Troy City Council meeting, scheduled to be held on May 14th, 2012. There is a Planning Commission mayoral appointment. Oh, it's a student nomination. I would like to nominate Eric Huang to serve a term that expires on July 31st of 2012. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Nomination passes. Again, that will be voted on at the May 14th meeting of the next Troy City Council meeting. Now, there are city council nominations. Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the Charter Revision Committee, three terms expiring April 30th, 2015. Daniel Bliss, William Weisgerber, and Marian Bernardi for the Employment Retirement System Board of Trustees. It's a councilperson that needs to fill this seat. It's a term expiring 4/15/2015. I'm nominating David Henderson. And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, two terms, both expiring April 30th, 2015, I nominate Michael Bartnik and Barbara Chambers.
Support.
Nomination is moved by Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis, supported by Councilman Slater. Discussion? Councilman Teetz?
Does this want to make amendments to the list?
You can make amendments, sure.
I'd like the Zoning Board of Appeals to add to the list Glenn Clark.
Do we vote on the amendment moved by Councilman Teetz, supported by Councilman Fleming, to add Glenn Clark to the list of nominees? A vote, discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, we move on the-
You'd vote on the amended list of nominations.
Okay. So, now, a vote, any discussion? Vote on the amended list of nominees?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. Nomination's made. They'll be voted on at the next regularly scheduled Troy City Council meeting to be held on May 14. That concludes the nomination process. There are no closed sessions requested, so we can move into regular business.
May we take a break at this point?
Would you like to, is there some consensus to take a break at this point? Five minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll take a break. We'll return in five minutes. Thank you.[550.79]
Steadfast, I have a preference that we would look at exterior building improvements, right-of-way enhancements, or targeted road improvements as a form of incentive for businesses to come into Troy. I'd like to see something like that on the table at some point in the future. That is why I have to vote no. Are there any other comments? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
No.
Mayor Daniels.
No.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move on to a resolution regarding a Class C liquor license for El Patio 4. This is actually a transfer of an existing liquor license. Could someone please move the resolution forward? Councilwoman Slater?
Okay. I will move I five, and this time I can do A and B, correct?
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, supported by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move to the process to evaluate proposals of search firms to conduct executive search for the city manager. We have a pre-approved evaluation form that the council needs to address. Counsel, are there any proposed modifications to the pre-approved evaluation form? Councilman Fleming?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure the right way to do this. We may have to move the resolution, then have discussion or whatever, but really what I'd like to see here is a study session. Delay this, not move this motion, and have a study session immediately following this meeting. And I know in the material that we got, that was one recommendation. I think we do a much better job as a council in a study session critiquing and developing something this important than we do up here in this format. But I'd like to delay it and not move the resolution at all.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman Henderson?
I thought that's what we talked about in last week's meeting, that we were going to have a separate meeting to discuss this. Is that not?
It was proposed as an option on the agenda. We could either vote on changes, or we could have a study session if there's agreement.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Fleming that we would be better off in a meeting where we can sit down and really dissect this to determine what would be in our best interest.
That's fine. Is there any other comments? Do we have agreement? Is this with a nod?
You would just take no action, and then we can go to the study session after the regular meeting.
Okay, we'll do that. Study session after the meeting?
Okay.
Good, it's good. All right, now, let's see. We are moving to item I seven, approval of the Troy Local Development Finance Authority Fiscal Year 2012-2013 budget. Would someone like to move the resolution forward?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Whereas the Troy Local Development Finance Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2012-2013 budget, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Local Development Finance Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Proposed Fiscal Budget 2012-2013. Could someone move the resolution, please?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Whereas the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2012-2013 budget, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Campbell. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Well, actually, I just, I wasn't sure if anyone else wanted to address it. There was an email sent by a resident, a former member of the Brownfield Redevelopment Board, and it was something that we addressed last year as well. He sent us similar concerns last year. They were addressed at that time for the council members that were sitting by our city management and city staff. I believe it was at the meeting setting when we discussed it last year on June 6th, but it was also via email. We received some explicit answers to some of his questions, and I just wanted to make sure going forward here that everyone that's sitting up here has the appropriate information and feels comfortable making that decision, because some of you weren't here last year. So if there was questions to staff, or if there was information that city managers or like thought would be appropriate to provide us at this time, like I said, I know I'm clear on it. There were some questions about money being spent in a school district at one point, and I know that that was resolved. There were some additional questions about administrative costs, and I believe we've received that information. But I just wanted to make sure that we went on record having those discussions here, if need be. So, I don't know if there was additional questions or information or if everyone felt comfortable.
Councilwoman Slater?
Yeah, I also wanted to bring that forward, because this is the second year in a row that we've received an email from this person, and this one was, in my opinion, slanderous towards members of this council and the city administration. And I think we need to put this to bed so that this doesn't happen again. And I just would like to get, Mrs. Bloom, if you could, tell us that this is legal, and it's within our right to approve this as it is, and that we're doing everything correctly. If you could, please.
Mayor, thank you. You do have, as one of the supplemental yellow items, a memo that was given to you today. Unfortunately, the email came in very late last night, and so today we did have a chance to address it. It's a joint memo from John Zerlik, myself, Mark Miller, and Tom Darling. And absolutely what is happening is legal. The revolving loan fund monies are not being used to pay the administrative costs. There is a fund balance that is separate from that, so the email was incorrect. What the city is doing with its Brownfield Redevelopment Authority budget is authorized by the state statute and is allowable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Just want to thank staff, too, because it did come in fairly late last night, and it was a pretty lengthy topic, and I know I questioned it right away, and within just a matter of a few short hours, we had a response, so appreciate the assistance.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
And I also just wanted to point out that it was something that was also approved by the current board after discussion, just as it was last year. And it was my understanding, last year after we addressed this issue, I was even able to locate an email from this individual that indicated that his questions were answered by Mr. Lakari, and that he was an exemplary staff member, as many of our staff members are. So I was surprised to see it come up again this year, and I just wanted to make sure that now with the new council, everybody's on board, because there were some technical issues. And I also appreciate the time that was taken, again, to address these issues for us, so that we could feel comfortable with our decision going forward.
Thank you. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move to the approval of the Downtown Development Authority Proposed Fiscal Year 2012-2013 budget. Could we have someone move the motion or the resolution forward, please?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilwoman Slater?
Whereas the Troy Downtown Development Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2012/13 budget, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Downtown Development Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? Councilman Teetz?
Since this is a subject that comes up often, I thought it would be good to just simply go through the expenditures and the budget for the DDA for 2012-13, because they're, frankly, very simple, very straightforward. The administrative expenses, the operating expenses, the tax tribunals, street island maintenance, and then five different debt services. It doesn't look like there are any new projects or things like that. Simply trying to pay down the debt that the DDA owes, and there's still work being done to get that situated that we don't, can't go into at the moment. But I think folks would appreciate that. And may we ask for the city assessor to discuss the tax tribunals, to clarify that, what that means in the expenditure side?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The tax tribunal issue is a citywide issue. It's important for the DDA in the fact that about 65% of our total personal property, commercial personal property, is in the district, and a little better than half of our commercial space is in the district. The tax tribunal appeals go back four years currently. Shortly, a fifth year will be added to those. We look at the historical change in assessed and taxable value, try to determine where we may or may not be exposed for the amounts of money that are under appeal, and since it does cover four years and soon to be five, we have to set aside funds to cover those. Should not just the district, but the city not be able to cover the refunds, the court would order a millage rate to cover those. Being very conservative in our estimates here, we always budget the money in advance. Obviously, any funds that are not used for those things either roll over or move to another fund in the succeeding years.
Thank you.
That's all.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move to an amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, the water and sewer rates. This amendment seeks to codify a millage increase upon the residents of Troy. Would someone like to move this?
Right.
Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves an amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, Water and Sewer Rates, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Can I have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
I believe I'm correct. This is about an 8% increase over prior year, and that's a direct cost pass-through. We had this discussion at the budget meeting, but just for the people who may be hearing for the first time.
You're absolutely correct, Councilman Fleming. Basically, these rates are based on the increases that we received from Detroit Water Sewer Board for water, and the Oakland County and Evergreen Farmington sewage districts.
Thank you. Further discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Move to a Publicly Funded Healthcare Insurance Contributions Act. That's Public Act 152 of 2011. This resolution opts out of what is called the hard cap option for city contribution to employee healthcare costs. Would someone like to move the resolution forward?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I'm actually going to read this resolution. Whereas Public Act 152 of 2011 requires that all municipal governments, including home rural cities, decide how to share the cost of health insurance between municipal employees and their employers, and whereas this act requires one of three options, hard cap, 80-20 split, or opt-out, and whereas each municipality must make a selection from one of the above three options every year, and report same to the state of Michigan, and whereas implementation of this program would only affect classified and exempt personnel for this year, as other unionized employee groups would not be affected by this act until the expiration of their labor contracts, and whereas the city of Troy has already been proactive in efforts to reduce and manage employee costs, especially healthcare costs, and whereas local governing bodies are elected to make the best financial decisions for their community through the annual budget process, and these decisions are best made at the local level, not at the state level, and whereas municipalities are better equipped than the state to determine what benefit levels should be offered to attract and retain the best qualified employees at the most reasonable cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Troy hereby advises the state of Michigan that Troy is selecting the opt-out option for the timeframe of April 1st, 2012 to April 1st, 2013.
Can I have a second? Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion? Councilman Teetz?
Yes, I will be voting no for a couple reasons. Last December 14th, we received a document from the Human Resources Department going into what exactly we're talking about. There are three categories. The first category is the city can opt-out. The second category is there's a hard cap set, meaning you can't spend more than X number of dollars for an employer. And then the third is the 80-20, meaning the employer pays 80%. The employee pays 20%. Currently, the city employee is approximately 5% paying in. And for the needs to reform local government, I think that we really need to take a hard look at these things, and when we talk about making the best financial decisions for our community, I think this is the sort of changes that we're talking about. It's my hope that we'll eventually progress to the 80-20 situation. It would match more to what is seen in the private sector, and it's the sort of reforms that are going to save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, and millions of dollars going forward with the upcoming union contracts and so forth. That'll be coming forward. So with us opting out, we're essentially, and this was a reform brought forward by Governor Snyder and passed through the legislature, and by opting out, we're essentially saying we're not interested in those reforms right now, and we're willing to have the taxpayer pick up the load here. And I think the taxpayer deserves to know how much the city employee versus us, the taxpayers, the employer is paying, and essentially the state has moved the goal line, saying that the old ways weren't working, and we need to have some reform. And I think that would be a healthy thing for to bring some of those things to Troy, so.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I just wanted to say something in response to that. I think the key component of this resolution, which is why I read the entire thing, was the fact that making this decision for this year, because this is only going to be for the timeframe of April 1st, 2012 to April 1st, 2013, would be that it's only going to affect one group of our employees, and that's classified and exempt personnel. And they were actually one of the first that came forward to us as a council and agreed to provide the concessions that we were looking for before the other labor groups could get together and offer what ended up being that same concession, and pretty much put us in the position that we're in this year, which is a much better financial position than we could have really hoped to be in two years ago. So my big issue with this, I think, is the timing. I'm not willing to select one of these other options at this time, because I think it would unfairly disadvantage this group of employees. This is not to say that this issue will not be addressed each year, and we will hopefully be able to work together as a council with our employees to make the best decision for the city, for the taxpayer, and for the employees. But at this point, because of the fact that every labor group and every employee, even if they're not in a labor group, has already come forward on their own, agreed to open up contracts that were not in a position to be open, and give us those concessions, I think that we're financially in a place where we know we're going to be okay until next April 1st of 2013. And for that reason, I'm not willing to unfairly disadvantage one group over another. So that's why I moved this resolution, and that's why I would support it.
Councilman Fleming?
I think that I'll support this, I will support this, up until April 1st, 2013. But I think we do have to take a hard look at this in the next round of contract labor negotiations, and what the state is asking us to do. But I do agree that we want to treat everyone fairly, and those people who stepped up and gave already, we've made a commitment to them. And I'd like to honor that commitment, because that was actually done when I was on a prior council, prior to this year. But I do think we have to really take a close, hard look at this. We were talking about rabbits earlier. This may be a rabbit that we're looking at in our next contract negotiation, a big rabbit, that if we don't address, it can multiply. So I'll support this tonight, but rest assured, we're looking forward to 2017 and things that we need to do to control our cost. This is certainly an area, and I agree with Councilman Teetz, we can't afford to ignore. We have to look at whatever options are there. I don't know what that'll be, but I think it has to be a subject in the negotiations, for sure.
Councilman Slater?
Yeah, we had a lengthy discussion about this, and so I don't want anybody to think that we haven't discussed this, debated it, and I agree with Councilman Fleming and Mayor Protem McGinnis. This is part of an agreement that we made, and I'm going to honor that agreement myself. And we do know that we're going to be looking at this issue when the first contract expires. So I just want everybody to know, we had a lengthy discussion and debate about this issue, and I'm going to support it today.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I also agree that it is a topic that needs to be delved into at the next opportunity. And although I don't feel an obligation to uphold an agreement that a previous council made, I certainly think it's unfair to any particular employee group to make an offering, have them agree to it, and then strip it away from them before the estimated time that they thought it would be available to them away. So I'm in support of this.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes our regular business. We'll move to consent agenda items. I would like to remove item J03, National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, but only for discussion. I'll be supporting it. And I would like to remove J04C, the Best Value Award Strategic Planning Consultant for Troy Public Library. Are there any other consent agenda items that someone would like to remove? Councilman Teetz?
J04...oh, for crying out loud. Oh, it's the one that was printed.
A, J4A.
J4A, just as FYI, I do business with that firm either here nor there, but just as FYI.
Okay. Did you want to remove it for discussion, or you just wanted to make that point?
I don't think, I just let folks know.
Okay. So then, could someone move the resolution for the items that are remaining?
Please.
Councilman Fleming?
I think I've got it. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exceptions of items...
J03.
J3B, J4A, and J4C. Is that correct?
Well, Councilman...
We're going to leave A on there.
Yes, Councilman Teetz said leave A.
So leave the A on there, it's just J4C.
Second? Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Councilwoman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll return to the items that have been removed for discussion. With regard to J03B, it's a proclamation for the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day. I just wanted to let everyone know that, in fact, it's the 20th Annual Food Drive to stamp out hunger, and this is taking place in our community on Saturday, May 12th. And we would invite all Troy residents to leave non-perishable food at their mailboxes on Saturday, May 12th, to support our local letter carriers and their food drive to help alleviate hunger in our community and throughout the nation.
Since you removed it, you would need to also move it and second and vote on it.
Okay, I'll make a resolution that we vote on the...
To approve the proclamation.
To approve the proclamation for the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, May 12, 2012. Can I have a second, please?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, supported by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to item J03C, I...J04C, thank you, Councilman Fleming. I wonder why we're spending money right now to get an outside consultant when we have an internal staff that's highly educated and very well-regarded in the community? Many residents have expressed concern that the Citizen Advisory Library Board that was disbanded last year should not have been disbanded, and I thought maybe we could reassign that Citizen Advisory Library Board to help assist with strategic planning in the development of that plan.
I'm not sure I understand your question, Madam Mayor.
I didn't have a question, actually, I'm just wondering why we should spend money. I'm just, I would like, I'm going to vote against this, because I don't think that we should spend money to hire a strategic planning consultant at a time when we have a very highly trained and well-regarded staff, and I think that we could have an advisory board from the community come in and do the same job, and thereby save some money. That's my thought. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I might give some direction. We did decide as a council to disband the library advisory board, but in its place, we had asked that a new committee was created that would have a little bit more of a universal reach, I guess. And we asked for many stakeholders to be involved in this lifetime learning committee, and there was outreach to the community. There are a number of different people that became involved, it's my understanding, and I know that they've been meeting. There's been input from residents, businesses, staff. And ultimately, it was my understanding that this was going to be the goal, that they would meet and determine how they would move forward and come up with a strategic plan, and this was kind of what I was waiting for. So I guess maybe it would be helpful if we got some background as to if that committee is meeting, what's been going on, and so you can kind of keep us up to date with the changes that we've made with the library, and getting input from our residents and businesses.
Mrs. Russ?
Mr. Miller is asking, actually, to speak.
Ms. Russ can answer questions about the library board, which has been meeting, the committee.
The lifelong learning committee.
Can you make some comments on that, and then I'll follow up about why we have a consultant?
Okay, sure. The lifelong, when the city council voted to disband the library advisory board, what they asked to put in its place was a lifelong learning committee, and that's what we did. I believe there was an update on the lifelong learning committee in a previous board packet a couple months ago. We sent out a call for volunteers. We got about 25 people who wanted to participate. Many people, for whatever reason, did not attend the meeting, so we're down to a committee, a committed committee, if you will, of about 12 people. And they are ready to go, but what we found is that we need some direction. And to follow up, if I may, with why the strategic plan, why we pursued this, is following the passage of the millage, the prior city council basically directed city administration to pursue this, pursue a strategic planning consultant, and that's why I did it. As you know, there's been some changes since the millage, or some events since the millage passed. The library budget was approved in September, and that it did include the, we did set aside The library budget was approved in September, and that it did include the, we did set aside funds for this. And then, of course, we changed from being closed on Saturday to being open on Saturday, which is a great thing for the library. So I wish that I had been able to bring this to you sooner, but there's been a bunch of things going on at the library that kind of took precedence over this. So we just proceeded with this direction. In terms of strategic planning, I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The comment was made that, pardon me, I'm losing my voice, that the library does not have the expertise to do this. The person, the sole proprietor which we're hiring, has an expertise in working with organizations such as libraries and museums to understand what their customer base and the stakeholders want, and to gather that information and synthesize it for a direction for that organization, in this case, our library. And we have expert librarians, but we don't have experts in strategic planning in this arena. So that's what they're going to do, and help us formulate the direction for the library.
All right. Is there any other comments? Councilman Teetz?
This was in last year's budget, is that correct?
This is in, it's in the current fiscal year, and then it's actually, because due to the lateness of this, it was included in the budget that you actually approved tonight.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
I just had one question regarding the firm that was chosen, and I looked at the scores that you gave each of the companies, and one of them looked to be better qualified and you felt more comfortable with. Their scores were much higher, but they're a little bit more expensive. And I'm not one to, you know, throw money away, obviously, we've had those discussions, but are we getting the best bang for the buck using that company, even though they're a little bit less expensive, whereas if we use the other company, would we be getting a better service?
I would say that we are getting a good bang for our buck, and that the other firm, which was more expensive, in the interview process seemed a lot more open-ended, ended, even though they were very experienced, and it would seem, in the interview process, it also was disclosed that there were a lot more potential for unknown costs in the future. So we do believe that this is the best venue and direction with Aaron gone.
All right. Finish this discussion. Have to move the resolution to approve the, what is that, called the strategic...
Planning consultant.
Planning consultant for Troy Public Library. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no memorandums or future council agenda items. Are there any council referrals? We'll move to council comments. Other council comments? Councilman Henderson?
I had the opportunity this last week to work at Bowlin Middle School for a program called "App to Succeed," and essentially, what I did is I interviewed six eighth graders, giving them real-life experiences in job interviews. I was able to review their resumes, look at their portfolios, and it was a very rewarding experience for me, and hopefully for them. But I just wanted to throw this out there, that there's still the need for local business people to get involved. Smith Middle School has several openings on May 16th for any business people out there that would like to get involved, and Baker has one spot available as of two days ago on May 22nd. And if anybody has interest in that, I'd be happy to forward the information and a link to the website, if they just email me at davehenderson@wideopenwest.com. And then I have one other question I'd like to just address. This came up in conversation, and it's regarding the Mitten website, and citizens would like to follow and be able to see what things are out to bid, who's bidding on them, and that sort of thing. And one of the comments that came to me was that it's impossible unless you want to sign up on the Mitten website with your credit card number, your social security, and get an actual subscription for the Mitten website, for the public to really follow up on anything that's going on with regard to our bid process. So I guess the question would be to city management, is there a way that we can try to facilitate that for the public? In other words, maybe set up an account, a city account, I think the subscription's $13 a month, or something of that nature, so that the public can use our ID, go on the Mitten website, and maybe pursue whatever they want to pursue as they get onto that site.
Councilman, or, I mean, City Manager Zureg?
Thank you. I'd like to have Susan Leirstein, our purchasing director, respond to Mr. Henderson's comments.
Mrs. Zureg?
Yes, thank you. I had prepared a response to that question at one point, and gave some kind of detailed instructions, but people can register for free. It isn't apparent when you first log into the website, you can go through, I think, four steps to get to finally the place where you actually sign up, and it looks like you have to pay. But then there is a search option on the left-hand side on that page that you can click on, and it will start drilling you down into the free option. There's going to be a lot of propaganda to still promote the pay subscription, but you can register for free. And once you do that, a message will come up that after 24 hours, you're given a login, a username and a password, and it'll come in the form of an email, but then you will have access and you'll get to see everything. I can provide those, if you like.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if you could maybe just shoot me an email as to, you know, maybe step-by-step...
Okay.
On how to get through that.
Yeah, I'll...
I'll play around with it myself as well, but...
Okay, good.
Something that we can put to the public, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah. Mayor, what we'll do is we'll send all of council that same information, so if anyone has something similar that they'd like to do with it, you'll have access.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I did have an announcement on behalf of the Friends of Troy seniors office, which is located, which is located in the community center, actually, okay. But they are having a very special event, and I wanted to make sure that this information was disseminated out to the public. Here at the meeting, Barnard Elementary School is inviting Friends of Troy seniors to join them for an exciting and fun day in their school on Thursday, May 10, 2012. This is a program that is limited to the first 45 seniors that register. They're able to register for this program by calling or stopping by the Friends of the Troy senior office. You must be 50 years or older to register. The office is open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. On Thursday, May 10, there's a whole entire day of events planned through Barnard Elementary School. The children and the staff at Barnard are very excited to have visitors join them. They'll actually be able to pick up the bus at the Troy Community Center at 8:50, where it will take them to Barnard Elementary School, and they have an entire day planned, including lunch in the dining room. So the day is free, and it's a great program. I wanted to make sure that the word gets out, for anyone that's interested in registering, you can contact the Friends of the Troy seniors office at (248) 526-2608.
Thank you. I also wanted to give an update on the Mayor for a Day contest. The deadline for entries is May 11 at midnight. I would like to expand on the event, in that I would like to take the winners around City Hall, and of course, the city council is welcome to join us, take them out to lunch, and then, of course, have them come to the seat, announce the invocation, lead the Pledge of Allegiance, bang the gavel to start the meeting, and I'm looking very much forward to this. Anyone who would like to read information on that can go to my personal website, janestroymayor.com, and I'm looking forward to picking the winners. We've got a number of essays that have been submitted, I understand they're very good. I haven't seen any of them yet, they're all going to be provided to me on the 12th of May. Thank you. We'll now move to reports. I was looking at a report in O-1B, and I wondered, Mayor Protem McGinnis, what the Automation Alley Foundation membership is about?
Hold on, let me get to where you're at. I wasn't anticipating a question.
Right, there's... Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Miller can respond to the Automation Alley membership, if you like, Mrs. McGinnis?
That would be great, as I'm an alternate on the committee. Luckily, I've had the benefit of actually attending most of them, and we don't have very many meetings per year, but I could give you an answer. I think Mr. Miller would probably be better. Thank you, that...
I think that there are two different things. One, the city is a foundation member, but Councilwoman McGinnis is involved with a foundation, which is to generate funds, which is a slightly different thing than our foundation membership.
I see, I see. Okay.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I'd just like to bring up N-07, and I want to thank Mr. Zureg for providing this memo regarding the Troy Transit Center operating expenses funding model. And I would encourage anyone that has any concerns regarding the operating and maintenance for the Transit Center to look at this memorandum, and maybe, John, if somebody could just give a brief overview of what this committee is going to do, and then I just have one request after you're finished.
Sure, thank you. As part of the Troy Chamber of Commerce intent to develop a business model to help identify supplemental revenue sources for the Transit Center, the chamber has initiated an advisory committee to formulate recommendations, and the committee is made up from individuals in both the private and public sector. We're represented by Mr. Mark Miller and Mr. Glenn Layton. Mark is the Director of Community and Economic Development, and everybody loves Glenn Layton, who's our economic development specialist. There's also an internal committee that's formed to assess the city's ability to enter into agreement for Transit Center leases, concessions, signage, naming rights, and other business-related venues that would bring revenue to the Transit Center, and ultimately, perhaps the City of Troy as well. And that committee consists, again, of Glenn Layton, Mark Miller, Steve Vandette, our attorney Lori Bloom, and Susan Leirstein, our purchasing director. The two committees will work in tandem, and additionally, there's a design committee that is going to incorporate the Chamber of Commerce, as well as Mark Miller and Steve Vandette, our city engineer. I think the salient part of this letter is that I had given an assignment to Mr. Miller and Mr. Vandette to do what they could to obtain a promise from Amtrak to cover operating expenses, and that's about all I did. The real work was performed by Mr. Miller and Mr. Vandette, who worked with Amtrak and convinced them to submit a proposed lease that essentially covers all operational costs for the Transit Center. That's a good thing, so that essentially, if Amtrak comes through, we think they will, the city agrees to that lease, Amtrak would cover all operating expenses, and then anything from the chamber in terms of their business model would be on top of that, with the exception of the use of the actual square footage. If the chamber uses, say, 25% of the Transit Center's square footage, Amtrak would expect the chamber to generate 25% of the operational costs. But this is all good news, and again, I want to thank all the staff, within particular, Mr. Miller and Mr. Vandette.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just have a follow-up? My understanding is that the committee is supposed to meet on a bi-weekly basis initially to start, and if, I would like to have a report to council on a monthly basis on the progress and what's going on between the chamber and this committee. I would request a monthly report, please.
One of my last assignments to staff will be to work with the chamber and request a monthly report. Do you want it, say, the first meeting of every month, beginning in June, or something along that line?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment about our report, and to be the 2012 City of Troy Assessment Role and Board of Review Report. Aside from the fact that there's a lot of important information there, I just wanted to call attention to this, so that people that may take a look at the agenda online but not read everything would have this information available. I think it sheds some light on some of the things that we discussed in our budget session, so this is timely, that's included in here. But what I wanted to point out is really, you know, you've also thanked your staff specifically, but I think it's important for us to also note that, here to the public, do a staggering amount of work, you produce great results, accurate results, we're very appreciative of that. But in addition, we've heard it tonight, in fact, I think there was someone talking about, Mr. Savage was talking about his interactions with your staff, and I personally have received numerous emails over the time that I've been on council of people that have had to interact with your staff members, and they always come away feeling informed, empowered. Sometimes they're navigating some technical issues that maybe they don't have that background information. Every time that I've talked to someone specifically about your department, they've come away happy, maybe they didn't like the answer that they got, but they really felt that they were treated with respect and given whatever information they were requesting in a very timely manner. I know that you've got a lot of work, and there's numbers in here that show us the phone calls and the case reviews that you're required to do, and I think the fact that you and your staff are able to do it with such great results and high customer satisfaction is, it makes us all look good. So thank you very much.
If that concludes our report section, we'll move to a special study session. Please join us if you'd like, otherwise, thank you for joining us at this portion of the meeting, and we'll see you again soon.